That one's been a little...
Yeah.
Welcome to the February 11th council meeting of the City of San Carlos. If you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is changes to the order of the agenda. I haven't received any requests for that, but anybody has anything? Hearing none, move on from that. Item four is report from closed session. Mr. Rubens, do you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to report out from the special meeting that the item 3A was not considered tonight in closed session at all. It was removed from the agenda. And the item 3B, there's no reportable action from closed session, however, you've got a regular agenda item on that matter.
Okay. Good, thank you. Next item is five council communications and announcements. Who wants to start with that? Anybody? Karen?
I can start. The Board for the Joint Powers Authority for the San Mateo County Library met last week, and in addition to talking about the plans for the makeover of the San Carlos Library, it was announced that the San Mateo County Library has been named a four-star library for the fifth year in a row. This was out of 7,570 public libraries were rated, and out of that, 262 qualified as star libraries. And we ranked 17th nationwide and third in California among public libraries with similar budgets. So we were beat out by Santa Monica Public Library and the Berkeley Public Library in our budget category. But that was quite a neat thing to be able to talk about, that all of our collective libraries have been doing a great job for our communities.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Who wants to go next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one item I wanted to ask whether or not the council would be willing to consider putting an item on a near agenda to have us discuss and give some direction to the Planning Commission on the entitlement review process for the transit village. I found myself thinking that I was actually going to share some of my thoughts with them individually, and then I realized that actually probably a better way to do that would be to have, since I suspect other people might want to do that as well, would be to have the entire council take it up. But I don't know if there's an interest in that. I think, I did talk to Scott Marsters briefly, and he actually said that his senses, the Planning Commission, would actually like us to give them some direction. Not that they would necessarily slavishly follow it, but that they would like to get the direction.
So again, your proposal is that we have a study session with them, or?
Well, we put an item on the agenda where we could discuss what, if any, direction for the entitlement review process, things we'd like to see, things that we are particularly concerned about, things we're not concerned about, anything that would serve as direction for the Planning Commission.
I, I don't know. I think that's why we have a planning commission. Not to, not to throw water on what you're putting out there, Councilmember Olbert, but I don't, when I was on Planning Commission, I never had anybody from the city council tell me what I should or shouldn't do, or was, they were interested or not interested in. Afterwards, they did. Sometimes to the death, some after I voted and I went, "Well, I guess you didn't like what I voted on," or something like that. But personally, I just, I think that's why there's two independent bodies, and they come up with their conclusions, and then we come up with ours. But that's just my opinion, so.
I would agree. I think it would be premature to do any kind of study session until we see what the developer is going to come back with, because I think that's going to be the next step, is for the developer to come back to the Planning Commission with the next round. And not knowing what will be included in that, I think we could spend a lot of time talking about what-ifs. I think we need something very specific for us to be able to react to. So that would be my only concern, is how effectively are we, are we using the time? I wouldn't preclude maybe later doing a study session, but I'm, I'm thinking that there's going to be some kind of regrouping of the thought process from the developer's point of view.
Through the chair, if I may, I just wanted to understand whether or not, will staff be having conversations with legacy partners prior to the Planning Commission review?
Yes, we will. We will be beginning just about immediately. I think we're trying to get something scheduled this week or next week with them.
I understand the concerns that, and sensitivities have been expressed, but if staff's going to be talking to legacy before they have submitted their plans, then it, you know, might be valuable for the council to weigh in there as well. Again, not in any definitive way, because we have to wait to see what actually comes back.
Well, I'm a little on the fence. There's a bit of a precedent for having a study session. When I was on the Planning Commission a while back, we had a couple of joint meetings with the council. We had a couple of joint study sessions where we talked about the issues that were at hand at that time. I think, I think we were talking about the grade separation, actually. So, not that I'm averse to it, but I do think that, it seems to me that the process is going to play out one way or another, and that we're going to have our, our chance to give our input and evaluate what the, what the Planning Commission has, has taken a look at, and take a look at their recommendations, and then come up with some of our own. So, I wouldn't be averse to it.
And if I may, just to add one little thing, which I forgot to mention earlier, Mr. Marsters had actually also said that he personally wouldn't mind having a joint session, such as you described, between the Planning Commission and the, so I, I thank you for reminding me, because I told him I was going to mention that.
I don't see how it could hurt.
Well, we seem to be at a, sort of a balancing point right now. I understand what Mr. Grisilli is saying, and Ms. Clapper, and, of course, I never served on the Planning Commission, but I understand the process, because, you know, served on other things. I would be inclined to allow it, that we go ahead with something like that, for this reason. It's simply, what I heard, what I heard you say, Mr. Olbert, was just to give them some idea about things that are important to us. It doesn't exclude them from other things, or other items that are important to them, but it lets them know ahead of time, things that are important to us, and, you know, just opens up those ideas to them. Again, it doesn't exclude them from having other things that are of higher concern on their part, and they may want to influence with their recommendation to us, those things. So I'm sort of with you, Mr. Collins. I don't see how it could hurt necessarily, except if it did send a message, as Mr. Grisilli was saying, where they might get the idea, "Oh, council's not concerned about anything else, so we're just going to focus on these things, and we would just need to set the table." That's not the case.
Except that they've reached out to us, so.
Yeah. That, well, that's true. Yeah. So.
Through the mayor, if I, if I could clarify, Councilmember Collins, I, I'm sorry, I had a little trouble following what your position was on this item, as we're trying to keep track over here.
Well, I think the more I talked about, the more I was in favor of it.
That's clear.
Sorry for the confusion.
You dropped the fence? Is that fence still on it?
No, I'm off the fence.
You conned us with that.
I think, I think it would, it might behoove the council then to just have a quick conversation about whether or not they'd like a joint study session with the Planning Commission, or if you'd just like to see this item come back just to the council.
Well, if I could ask a question, Mr. Olbert, did you say that Scott Marsters asked if we could have a study session, or what exactly was the nature of his sentiments on it?
If you'll indulge me briefly, let me recount the summary of the conversation I had with him. I actually contacted him just because I wanted to, I was going to bring this issue up, and I didn't want to be crosswise with the Planning Commission. And that's when he said, "No, actually, I'm all in favor of that. I would actually, we would like to get, we actually have asked to get input from the council." And then he said, "And by the way," he said, "I actually think this is something we might want to think about having a joint meeting about." So that was the, that was the context in which he brought it up. I didn't get the sense that he was like, that's what he felt had to happen, if that helps clarify.
Yes. Well, it's a big project, so I just, I think it'd be a valuable process.
I'm certainly not, not adverse to joint meetings. I've been, joint session with the Planning Commission, I've been mentioning that for quite some time, that I think it would, it would be effective. I'm just not sure that I'm getting the context of what the timing would be relative to why we would be having the study session. Are we just taking the information we have at this point? Are we waiting for some additional information? You know, when would it be most effective? And I'd like to make sure that we're not just rushing into having the study session, because we think it would be a good thing, but that we're clear on, on why there will be added value. Because I can't see just going in and basically doing a rehash of the EIR process. I'm hoping that we will have moved along the discussion line significantly.
Yeah, I don't think that's what the intent would be.
Okay, great.
I mean, we've approved the EIR, so.
For me, I would see it dealing with the second item that we dealt with after the EIR, which we didn't, especially given, yeah, given how much time we spent on the EIR itself. When we got to the improvement measures, we spent almost nothing. And I think that's the area that, I would guess, that's the area that they're wanting the focus to be.
Okay. I like scoping it that way. That sounds good.
Okay.
So we'll put the improvement measures on a upcoming council agenda.
Okay. How, what will be the, the, how will we manage that part of the meeting if we're going to do a joint session with the Planning Commission? How would we?
So we do want to do a joint session, okay. I thought we sort of switched gears at the end there, back to just putting the...
They just want to hear, they want it on our agenda so they can hear more from us.
They would like to hear, they would like to hear from us. Personally, just my personal view, putting together a joint meeting can be logistically difficult, in terms of matching schedules. So perhaps the thing to do is to task staff with seeing if such a meeting could be put together quickly, then perhaps we go that way. If it can't, then just put it on as an agenda item for the meeting, because I think Ms. Clapper made a very good point a minute ago, which is that, you know, if we schedule the meeting for April, that's kind of pointless, because it's, it's, you know, the process will have been going down the tracks for quite a while.
Yeah, in terms of a joint meeting, I think what we'll try to do is schedule a standalone joint meeting, as opposed to try to shoehorn it into existing calendar schedule unless we, unless it's just impossible. And, you know, my recommendation would be, if it's proving difficult to schedule a joint meeting, just, just because of calendars, then we would go ahead and put this on the council's agenda, no later than March 11th, whether we can get a joint meeting together or not. I think that we want this done and discussed by March 11th.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Is that?
Thank you.
The summation of your report?
That's the summation of my report.
Okay. Mr. Collins, anything for sharing with the council of the community, or?
No, I, I went... No, I went through my calendar, and other than a couple of committee meetings that I went to, nothing to report.
Okay, very good.
And nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I've got a couple of items. One is, just to share that we did, as a council, I think all of us got this, a letter from some citizens. It looks like a petition. Has the whole council seen this? It's people who live on the 300 block of Cedar.
It's not ringing a bell with me.
Okay. Well, we received a petition, a petition, oh, yeah, just, it's to staff, and it's he sees the mayor, maybe that's why. Okay. So this is to Greg Rothaus, and then also Jay Walter, Public Works, and they're asking to have their street looked at, the 300 block of Cedar, because they're having trouble with traffic, and then traffic accidents happening and so forth. You're familiar with this, Jay? So I just wanted to highlight this, and is there some kind of action that's being taken at this point?
Just to let council know, actually, the police chief and I met this morning, talked about several locations in town in regards to traffic safety. This was one of them. So we're going to gather some information, some traffic counts, and some collision data, and then meet again, and talk about what we might possibly consider doing there.
Okay. Very good. And that'll go through, will it first go through, they were talking about having it go through the traffic and transportation first?
It's a, that's a likely destination for it. Again, just depending upon what we find and what we would recommend doing. It may involve the commission for approval of, if it's a project of some type, or maybe just information-wise.
Very good. Okay, thank you. The next item I have here is, we are receiving an invitation from Jeffrey G., the Vice Mayor of Redwood City, to attend the, let me get the-
Is that for the Lunar New Year?
Yeah, for, exactly. Thank you. For the Chinese Lunar New Year. And it is Saturday, February 23rd, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Courthouse Square, which is down in their Theater District, I think you might call that, I don't know. So again, February 23rd, 11 to 4. And I think the whole city of San Carlos is welcome to attend, not just our council, but they did send it to our council. And the last item I have is that the Samatello Civil Grand Jury is seeking applicants, and the application deadline is March 29th. And you could go to, if you're interested, you could go to the court website, which is samateocourt.org, and the application process and so forth is there on their website. So I wanted to make people aware of that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, would it be possible to get a copy of the letter from the citizens who live on Cedar?
Yes. I can give it to the city clerk, and she can disperse it to the rest of the council.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is, instead of council saying things, staff reporting to council, isn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. Very good. I do that just to keep the Vice Mayor on his toes.
He always is.
He always is. I noticed that. Okay, next item is Public Six, is a public comment, and this is for people who wish to address the council on items that are not on our agenda tonight. So if there's something you're here tonight to speak to us about, I do have one speaker card from Craig Dittwiler, and that's the only speaker card I have right now.
Hi, Craig Dittwiler from Leslie Drive. You may remember me as the Dirt Guy from mid-November or so. Subsequently, I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Walter, and also do a little bit of research as to the actual costs associated with hauling heavy loads. I wanted to kind of follow up and give you a little bit more information. First of all, per Mr. Walter, the history of the fee. It appears that basically it was pretty, well, so, just to review what I was here for last time, I was asking the council to please reconsider the dirt hauling fee in light of the fact that it is on the order of 30 to 40 times that of what's charged by any surrounding town. So historically, it appears that the fee was actually more in line with that of neighboring towns, until several years ago, when it suddenly jumped by a factor of about 10 or 15. I'll state for, as just a matter of evidence, that that also happened to correspond at the years that the hospital was coming online, and the transitability projects and stuff were being suggested. I'll refrain from conjecture as to exactly what the thinking might have been, and leave it to your own inference. Be that as it may, the fact of the matter is, the fee remains pretty clearly unjustified. If you refer to the data, and I think you should all have a copy of this letter that I submitted. If you've heard the data in the table on the second sheet, you can see that the actual cost associated with hauling an 80,000-pound truck over a road ranges from a few cents per mile to about $5 per mile, depending on the type of road under consideration. On highways, it's a lot less, because they're constructed with a more durable material. On a, you know, small rural road, it's a lot more, presumably suburban roads like in San Carlos fall something in between. Estimates range a little bit, but, you know, for a suburban road falling somewhere in the middle, you can figure something like about a dollar for an 80,000-pound truck per mile, given that that hauls 25 cubic yards. If you divide that out, you're basically coming to something on the order of five cents per cubic, five cents per cubic yard per mile. And I'll remind you that San Carlos' fee is currently $11 per cubic yard. So again, you know, it's off by a factor of 50, according to this. The other thing I'll point out is that the weight of the truck factors tremendously into this. It's generally assumed that the damage to a road varies with the fourth power of the weight of the truck. So if you bring in dirt on trucks weighing half as much, admittedly, you have to use twice as many trucks, but each truck does 16 times less damage, and so the net result is eight times less damage. And so I've got a second part of the table there that figures the cost per cubic yard using lighter trucks. Again, it's just, it's a handful of cents, but even smaller handful of cents. So according to those figures, we're dealing with a fee in San Carlos that's something like 200 times or 300 times what the actual costs incurred by the city are. The data in that table is all supported by a number of excerpts, which I have in Addendum A, and those excerpts all come out of the references in Addendum B. I've given URLs for most of them. I have PDFs for all of them, and I'm happy to forward if you're interested in pursuing this in gory detail. But the long and short of it is that it really appears more than ever that the fee currently assessed by San Carlos just bears really no resemblance whatsoever to the actual cost of hauling loads. So I've made a number of suggestions in the cover letter. You know, obviously, I would like to see the fee become a lot lower than what it is, on the order of, you know, cents per cubic mile, per cubic yard, or, or more ideally, really charged by the weight of the truck, which is actually a more sensible way to do it, given the, given the strong relationship between the weight of the truck and the actual damage done to the roads. And then again, just to bring it in line with neighboring towns, which if I recall from my presentation in November, averaged something like, you know, 50 cents per cubic mile, or per, sorry, 50 cents per cubic yard, or per mile. That is pretty much all I have. So I look forward to hearing what the council decides when it reviews fees in a couple of months.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for this information. Mr. City Manager, I just have a question, because the gentleman did come one time before. Was there some kind of follow-up at that time?
Yeah. I'd ask our Public Works Director to come up and talk about a little of the work that's been done to date.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director again. As Mr. Dittwiler has reminded you, he was here in November, when he presented his first issue of the cost of the dirt hauling fee in San Carlos. Since that time, I met with him, and I've also met with city staff, and kind of discussed this, tried to get some history and some background on it. One of the things that we do have in place, that we're working on right now, is a fee study that will be finalized and coming to you in April or May timeframe. And one of the things that we have included in that is an evaluation of this dirt hauling fee, to see if we can tie it to fees that are, similar fees being charged by their agencies, kind of getting to the basis of it, to whether it's, you know, a fee that we, that we want to keep on the books, or whether we want to modify it in some way. So I feel like we're making good progress on getting to that point, and we should, we should have this issue resolved when it comes back to you with the final fee study recommendations.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, that brings us, I have to find my papers. No wonder I'm lost. Here we go. Consent, approval of the consent calendar. So the consent calendar is approved in whole with all these items, unless there's something, somebody would like to pull off. I have a couple of items myself, but, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, just a, rather an open question. I'm wondering if maybe we ought to pull Item M, because the CEO of the chamber is in the audience tonight, and I thought he might want to have some input on that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that we pull Items K and L, and address them separately.
Very good. Those were two of the three that I had. And the last one I had was N.
N as in Nancy?
As in Nancy, yeah. Do you know Nancy?
No. Probably no N.
Okay. All right. So it's essentially the last four items are pulled, so it'd be Items A through J.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve consent calendar items A through J.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, we need the ordinance read in full.
We do. Who made that motion? He gets to do that.
Is that H?
Yes.
Okay.
Is already spun.
Adoption, I better read, adoption. There you go. Of ordinance number 1454, adoption of ordinance number 1454, in order to the City Council, the City of San Carlos, amending Chapter 2.24 of the Municipal Code Regarding Commissions.
Second the motion.
Now can we do roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. Let's take these now, and take them in order. We'll go with Item-
We're going to do them now? We're not going to do them-
At the end of the meeting? Yeah, we're just getting them done now.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would make, I would have no problem taking M, because Mr. Collins, for some reason, feels Mr. Bouchard not having him wait. But the other items, personally, I, I think we might get into some long details, and some, some people might, I won't, but some people might have lots of discussion on this, so. But anyway, I mean, that's, that's just my point. And if the rest of the council wants to take them now, we can do that. But I would say M for sure, but, because, Mr. Bouchard, I don't want to have him wait till the end of the meeting. Normally, we push these to the end of the meeting.
Well, we do sometimes, and we don't other times, but Mr. Bouchard probably doesn't get paid overtime, so we'll take M right now.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for it, to discuss it, or?
To take them early, or take them one-
No, 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 no. To bring up Item M for discussion?
No, no, not at all. Yeah. So Item M is the approval of a contract with San Carlos Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Swicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. This item is a resolution to approve a proposed contract with the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services for fiscal year 2012 to 2013, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. The proposed contract is worth $45,000 in services, and it would include $10,000 for the chamber helping with the downtown streetlights, banner changeout, $20,000, and a potential business showcase event, $15,000. And that is an item that is also on your agenda tonight. I can tell you that the Economic Development Commission also reviewed this and voted seven to zero to recommend that council approve it.
All right. Any questions or discussion on the item?
I have one, one question.
Okay.
This is for fiscal, this current fiscal year, we're halfway through the fiscal year. Is it typical for us to do the Chamber of Commerce contract at this point in time in the year, or was there some, something special that occurred that delayed the approval of this contract?
Back when we approved the budget, $45,000 was what was approved. At the time, staff was coming with a recommendation for $30,000, and council asked that we add another $15,000 to our chamber contract. Again, this is actually a reduction from prior years, where we were using redevelopment agency funding for San Car, for chamber services and events, and we had dramatically reduced that because of RDA dissolution. And chamber wanted, the council wanted to restore some of those funds. We were working with the chamber to figure out exactly where we would want to program those additional funds. One of your strategic plan items is a business showcase event, and we thought that was the ideal place to program this additional money. So then we brought, which is why we're bringing the contract tonight with the business showcase plan.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right. We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve Item 7M, the extension of the, or adoption of the contract with the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. We'll come back to these other items after we've done everything else. So let's go on to Item 8, reports to council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. In the last strategic plan that was adopted in August, council had an amendment included in that to receive a report of the status of the city's unfunded liabilities. So tonight, I'll be presenting the elements of those and the status of each. The city's total unfunded liabilities are estimated to be approximately $50 million. The components of these are the following. Pension plans with CalPERS totaling $27.9 million, OPEB healthcare totaling $4.1 million.
Ms. Mendenhall, could you please describe those, those acronyms, please, for us?
Yes. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits.
I'm sorry, someone coughed.
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Thank you.
The longevity benefit totaling $3.5 million, and the remaining obligations related to the former Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, and our share of those totals $14.8 million. Although these numbers are large, it's important to note that the majority of the annual required contributions toward these obligations are already incorporated into the adopted budget. These amounts are not due and payable now, but rather amortized over 20 to 30 years. So the largest unfunded liability is related to the pension funds. With the passage of PEPRA, or the Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013, the city now has seven different retirement tiers. They include three safety plans, one for police, one for fire, which is our 2 at 50 plan, and a new tier that was established with PEPRA, which is 2.7 at 57. We have four miscellaneous pension tiers. These are for the non-sworn employees. The 2.7 at 55, 2.5 at 55, 2.0 at 55, and the new PEPRA plan, 2.0 at 62. Three of these tiers became effective in the last year, and since CalPERS values plans using historical data typically two years old, these tiers do not yet have an actuarial unfunded liability. So the four that do have an unfunded liability are noted here on your screen, and they include the police plan, our fire plan, and the first two tiers for our miscellaneous employees. The first unfunded, unfunded plan that we'll talk about is the police safety plan. This plan is related to those former employees of the San Carlos Police Department. Following the outsourcing of the police department in November 2010, we began working with CalPERS to merge these obligations into our active fire plan. This was to keep the plan from moving into the inactive status. The inactive risk pool liabilities and payments are calculated differently than the active pools. Active pools are calculated based on a percentage of payroll, where the, and the inactive plans are calculated based on the plan's actuarial liability as a percentage of the entire active inactive pool. Since there are fewer agencies in the inactive pool, CalPERS advised us if we were to move into the inactive pool, our annual costs would go up by $500,000 to $700,000. into the inactive pool, our annual costs would go up by $500,000 to $700,000. Since the city has an active safety plan for our fire department, our position was that this plan could be merged into the, into the fire plan to avoid any increase in costs. Since we no longer have any police employees, having the costs go up by half a million didn't seem logical. Last June, CalPERS agreed with our proposal and merged the police liabilities into our fire plan, resulting in savings of approximately $100,000 a year. However, last October, CalPERS reversed this decision, resulting in an increase in our annual required payment of $540,000 in the next fiscal year. The city's retained legal counsel to appeal this decision. It's important to note that although our cost for the police will increase next year, under Amendment Four to the sheriff's contract, the county will absorb the entire increase. Under Amendment Four, the city pays the fully loaded retirement contribution for the, for the county, less the annual amount that we pay to CalPERS. So we've already met with the county to discuss that this increase is coming. Following the decision by CalPERS to unmerge the safety tiers, the resulting unfunded liabilities for police total $13.19 million, which includes $4.9 million in side funds. The side funds were established by CalPERS in 2005, when CalPERS moved employers with fewer than 100 employees into risk pools. The side fund has 10 years of payments remaining at an annual amount of $700,000. The fire plan, our Two at 50 Plan, was established in October 2011, and therefore, at this time, the unfunded portion is only $13,000, since the most current actuarial report we received from CalPERS is based on the year ended 6/30/2011. There are two miscellaneous tiers with unfunded liabilities. Tier one, our 2.7 at 55, has a current balance of $14.49 million with a side fund of $3.9 million. The side fund has 15 years of amortization remaining, with annual payments of $350,000. Although the side funds were established at the same time, the amortization periods differ as CalPERS tried to keep the annual costs similar to what agencies had before they moved into the risk pools. Miscellaneous tier two became effective in March 2009, and applies only to those employees who were hired from March 16, 2009, through April 23, 2012. Since this tier does not have a side fund, the unfunded liability is $230,000. Aside from the retirement obligations, the city also has OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Obligations, related to healthcare. Employees who retire after 10 years of city service are entitled to the minimum amount required by law under the CalPERS PEMCA Health Plan, which is Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act, and that is currently at $115 per month. In addition to this, employees who retired before January 2009 receive a reimbursement up to the single employee contribution. In 2009, the city council passed a resolution authorizing participation in the California Employers Retirement Benefit Trust, or the SERPT Trust, and we prefunded the trust in the amount of $1.5 million. The unfunded liability for this is estimated to be $4.1 million. In January 2009, the city created a longevity recognition program for employees who had completed at least 10 years of continuous city service immediately before retiring from PERS. This benefit has been significantly reduced over the years, and no employees hired on or after March 28, 2011 are eligible for a city contribution. In September of 2011, the city council passed a resolution to set up an irrevocable trust with PARs, the Public Agency Retirement Services, and we prefunded the trust with $1.2 million to offset the total liability. Under GASB 27, we are required to complete an actuarial study every two years. At the time of the last study, we were still in discussions with the labor unions regarding concessions. Since this benefit is no longer applicable to employees hired on or after March 28, 2011, it's anticipated that the total unfunded liability, based on actuarial assumptions, will be lower once we complete our next valuation. The final element of our unfunded liabilities is that of the remaining obligations of the former Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department for both pensions and retiree healthcare. Similar to what happened with our police plan, last November, the JPA received notification from CalPERS that the plan would be moving into the inactive risk pool. As a result, the total annual contribution increased 70% from $1.6 million in 2013 to $2.7 million in 2014. The JPA Fire Board met last week with John Bartel to discuss options related to paying off these obligations. The JPA retained John Bartel two years ago, once the dissolution was known, to help look at ways that we could reduce these obligations in the future. Bartel has offered two options for the board to consider: hiring one employee to reactivate the plan, and the second option would be to pay the annual required contributions based on the inactive risk pool. If the JPA were to hire one employee, it would, it's estimated that we would save money for the first three years. However, we're still not certain that CalPERS would even allow this option. We understand that CalPERS is, right now, reviewing the rate assumptions, as well as how they treat and calculate each of the risk pools, and as a result, Bartel has advised the board to wait and see what comes out of the CalPERS board meetings that are scheduled for, I believe there's some next week, and early in March. In addition to the pension liabilities, the JPA still has retiree health obligations with an unfunded liability of $3 million. As per the JPA agreement, the city's share of both of these obligations is 52.9% for a total obligation of $14.8 million. In summary, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, although our total unfunded liabilities are $50 million, it's important to note that we do continue to make the annual required payments, and those contributions, like I said, are included in our adopted budgets. In addition to the annual payments, there is $3 million of fund balance specifically assigned toward the city's unfunded liabilities that council could use, or could choose to use, to pay down these obligations. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a couple. You mentioned that $540,000, that was the unfunded liability. Did you say that the county that has assumed that?
The county will be paying that as part of our agreement with the sheriff's contract, or with the sheriff's office.
Okay. Thanks.
No other questions? I just have one. The amounts that they are giving is based on a return rate?
It's 7.5% for CalPERS, right now. They, as, as I mentioned, they're looking at those rate assumptions, and I believe the CalPERS chief actuary would be recommending a revision at the, one of the future board meetings. They haven't released the agenda, so I can't say for certain, but-
So do we have any idea of if, if those rates are reduced, is there a way to forecast the indexing, what that will do?
Well, that will depend on how the board implements any change. So when they dropped it from seven and three quarters to seven and a half, they implemented rate smoothing, so they, they increased our rates slowly over two years to phase them in. I would anticipate that the board would probably do the same thing again.
So when they look at this rate, they're looking at timeframe of how long for those investments?
I don't know.
If you don't know?
I don't know. And once they, once they do, or if, if the board even hears or has that item come forward, there would be a staff report that, at least last time when they did this, the staff report included guidance for agencies as to what the increase might cost. So hopefully, we'll have that soon.
I suppose they're averaging over a window of certain years past and forecasting it. Is that right?
Yes.
Something like that? Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other questions?
Do we have an opportunity to discuss something?
Sure. Where there's no action on it, but-
I understand.
Yeah.
What I was leading up to, thank you, Ms. Mendenhall, what I was leading up to was, I wanted to propose that we ask staff to gather some additional information for us, and in fact, part of it relates to the question you were asking, Mr. Mayor, which is to get a little bit of a sensitivity analysis of what would our annual obligations, payment obligations, look like if, under different yield assumptions, rate or return assumptions? Because frankly, everything I've read in my own senses that, that CalPERS is still being rather optimistic about what they're going to earn. And there are other assumptions, too, that are, that critically affect how much any agency will be paying in the future, one of which is the, the assumptions that they've been making about the total employee, public employee base over which they're spreading costs. If you imagine a situation where one is assuming that public sector employment is going to increase, then you have one set of numbers that you think you need to charge. But in reality, particularly in the current era where public sector employment is decreasing, you get a very different situation. And I believe we have, from talking to Ms. Mendenhall, I believe we do have access through our consultants to folks who can do those kind of analyses and just give us some what-if information. And at some point, I would love to see that come back to us.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you for the report. That then moves us on to item 9A, which is to look at an MOU. It's back to Ms. Mendenhall.
Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight for consideration is a memorandum of understanding tentatively agreed to by the AFSMI, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Unit. This group is comprised of 25 budgeted positions, including account techs, senior admin clerks, assistant and associate planners, associate engineer, building inspectors, civil engineering technician, civil engineering assistant, public work supervisor and inspector, fire inspector, the emergency preparedness coordinator, recreation coordinators, recreation supervisors, and the senior systems analyst. Prior to this round of negotiations, the city had two AFSMI units, the clerical technical and the mid-management unit. Due to the size of the clerical technical unit, the city requested and received approval from the union to merge those two units into one, and that unit has now been renamed the AFSMI Technical and Professional Unit. The resolution before you includes a 2% increase in base salary. This is the first time since 2010 that a salary increase is being considered for this unit by council. In 2010, both units agreed to concessions totaling a 5% reduction in total compensation. The fiscal impact of approving this contract totals $49,800, and that has been factored into the adopted budget. Summary of the key components, this MOU would have a term through June 30, 2014. There's an increase in the base wage of 2% effective July 2, 2012, for the former employees of the mid-management unit, and a 2% increase effective November 5, 2012, for the employees of the former clerical technical unit. It has the continuation of the same health benefit that other cities' employees have, where employees pick up the first 5% of medical increases. It establishes a VIBA, a voluntary health benefit association program, where employees can contribute an amount equal to $200 of their vacation accrual annually. And it establishes the new retirement tier, as, as per the PEPRA Act, 2% at 62. And finally, it has an increase in life insurance benefit of, from $100,000 to $200,000 beginning January 1, 2014. I'd like to extend my thanks to the members of the AFSMI unit for working with us to negotiate this contract. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Any discussion on the item? I just, I am going to make a point here, because, and for the public to know, too, a lot of this gets, you know, we discussed this in closed session, so that's when a lot of the questions get answered, and we at least reach a consensus on the item, or it wouldn't be here, under the condition that it is. And I just want the council to know and the public to know, I'm going to stay consistent on this. I've voted no on the others, and I'm going to vote no on this one. There are parts of this that I like, the change in the retirement, for instance, I like. There's, there's actually a lot of things in here that I like. But I am concerned, as I've said before, about, at this point, still in our economic situation, giving increases to salaries. And part of my concern also is that, you know, we're maybe coming out of some economic crunch times, but the way I've seen it, we've really held back on capital improvements over the years, and we've taken money that we used to put into the capital improvement fund, and we put it into the general fund, and that's an area I'm still concerned about. I'm concerned about all the projects that we have on that list that we're not funding. So I just want folks to understand my vote when I, when I make it.
Thank you for explaining that, and I can, I can understand your, your point of view on that. That is always a risk. My approach has been to approve these because I think that there is a more significant risk in terms of the message that we're sending the employees of the, of the city over a period of time. And it's a real judgment call as to how you weigh those, I can, so I can certainly see your points.
There, I think this is the last one of this year's cycle?
It's really the last one of last year's cycle.
Okay. Well, I, I do also want to make this point, because I, one thing I do appreciate is, there was a time, and Mr. Malpey's very aware of this, I was highly critical that we were increasing at a rate of over 7% or 8%, and yet our, our income each year, our revenues, were not increasing at that pace. And that was one of the things I was critical of, and Mr. Malpey and his staff has seen to it, that we brought that in line, and I'm, so I want to commend the staff for that, for bringing things in line, at least with where our revenues are.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and to approve resolution number 2013 dash-
12.
12. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and Local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Technical and Professional Employees Unit, AFSCME, AFSMI.
Second.
No further discussion, I don't see, so we'll take roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Okay. That moves us on to item B, which is consideration of approving seven funding grants. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because we have a staff report.
Evening again, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Swicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. The item before you is to approve seven funding grants totaling $98,000, and for the city manager to execute contracts with Parca InVision Shelter Network, HIP Housing, MidPenn Housing Corporation, Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities, Samaritan House, and Christian Action Lifeline Primrose Center, otherwise known as Call Primrose. In our budget for fiscal year 2012-13, we had allocated $100,000 for this purpose. We have been allocating and contracting with these organizations over the past six years in similar amounts. In June 2012, council approved a more open and competitive process for soliciting requests and awarding grant funds through issuance of a notice of funding availability that NOFA was released in September of 2012, and we received eight applications requesting aggregate funding of $310,000. Six of those were from organizations that we were previously funding. The applications were evaluated based on compliance with policies and programs of the City Housing Element and Affordable Housing Programs Ordinance. We looked at how many San Carlos residents would directly benefit if the services would be provided within the city, the amount of the funding request in relation to the organization's overall budget, and if there was any prior funding history with, with the organization and the city and RDA. Our recommendation is to fund seven of the eight applications. Almost all of the organizations would receive a, a reduction of approximately 30% either from, from their prior year or from, from their request. And then there's one new organization that, that we would be funding. And this slide, if you can read it, indicates what the prior funding was in the left column. The middle column is what they had requested, and the right column is the recommended funding. So you'll, one of the organizations actually requested a reduction. So you'll, one of the organizations actually requested a reduction, knowing that we were tighter on funds. And the Mid-Penn organization looked at the total amount that we had available and asked for all of it. We went back and looked at which of their items were actually top priority, life and safety-related projects that we were interested in and willing to fund in relation to what the other organizations were doing. Our intent by apportioning the total available funding to multiple agencies gives us a range of affordable housing services and programs that can be offered in the community. This broadens our base of services and better addresses a wider range of affordable housing policies. I am available for questions, and we also have several of the organizations here that can present directly on what they do for San Carlos. Thank you.
Very good. Questions? Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Zouki, just to make sure I understand, so was it HIP Housing who actually requested less funding in recognition of our, or which agency was it that requested less funding?
It was HIP Housing.
It was HIP Housing. Well, my thanks to them for recognizing the fiscal realities that we're operating under. My second question has to do with, there's an old saying about how 500 people can't share an orange, because you divide it up so small that there's no sense of the orange anymore. We don't have 500 grant recipients here, but particularly when we're having to significantly allocate a relatively small pie now. Do we evaluate whether or not at some point it would be worthwhile funding, more fully funding, a smaller number of organizations?
That was one of the considerations. The drop back is not that significant for any of the organizations. We're talking in the thousands of dollars. And if the prospect was not funding any of these organizations at all, we thought that they were all doing very worthwhile work, and we've worked with them for several years. So there was no reason to cut any one of them out. They also do different work. It's not like they are duplicative, and one does it better than another. So all of those factors were weighed, and in fact, we, you know, added another organization, which is Mid-Penn, which manages the L'Oriola Oaks project on the east side. So we were trying to do all things as much as we could.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that actually we do weigh whether or not we, at some point, might need to do that. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I actually have a question of the city attorney. I sit on the board of Samaritan House, so I don't think it's appropriate that I vote on this on bat one. Is, can we, can we split this into, and again, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for that, but can we split the vote into the others and then Samaritan House separately?
Absolutely. You could split the vote and have two motions.
Is it appropriate, is it appropriate for me if I need to comment on Samaritan House, or should I recuse myself from even commenting?
Well, you don't have an FPPC conflict with, on a, sitting on a nonprofit board. It's one of those issues that's in appearance.
Yeah.
And so you could certainly come down from the dais and speak as a member of the public.
If I need to.
If you're making a decision to recuse yourself.
Yeah, I think I should recuse myself on that, on that separate vote, if we could separate out that one. I appreciate it.
Which one is it?
Samaritan House.
Samaritan House, okay.
And I'll reserve the ride if I need to go down and say something.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions about what the recommendation is in here. I am interested to know how the process worked and what staff would recommend for next year, if we would just continue to do it this way next year, or if there were any lessons learned for how to approach it, besides wishing for, you know, a larger pool of money.
I should add that one of, one of the recommendations would be to follow the same funding for next year. Our concern is that we can't identify how much money we will have next year for these organizations, and that's something we've let them know. So our intent was actually to do this every two years as part of a two-year budget cycle rather than every year. I think we were surprised to see the response from all of the organizations that we had been funding, and not a lot from any new organizations. So that it, you know, I guess it gave us good feedback that we were doing the right thing for the past several years. And yeah, I think that was, we were surprised and happy with the process.
Good. Thank you for the feedback. I have no further questions.
So I have two questions. First one is, we budgeted 100, and we're not quite going there. Is there a reason we're not quite going there?
Again, one of our concerns is not knowing for sure what our resources will be in coming years. There was even a concern that we might want to cut that back further, sort of a softer landing if we're unable to continue to support these organizations to, and I think this goes to Councilmember Olbert's question as well, at what point do you, do you contract further if you don't believe you can fund any longer? The funding for housing, because the redevelopment agency has gone away, we used to have 20% of tax increment flowing into a housing fund. We no longer have that. We have some housing assets that will, that should throw off some money that can be used for this purpose. We may also be getting in-loof fees from large developments that will, you know, significantly fund, could significantly fund this process going forward. But at the moment, we don't know. So, but why 98,000 versus 100? It was, I think, just the max.
I wasn't concerned about the delta. I was just concerned about why we are not going all the way to the max. And my last question is the same kind of question I ask when I get phone calls, you know, from organizations soliciting support. And that is, do we ask these organizations about their overhead costs? In other words, for every dollar we give, how much is actually going to the people who are using the service and the people in need?
We did ask those questions, and we do look at their administrative overhead. They all run a pretty tight ship.
Do we know what the average figures?
They're all fairly small organizations, you know, relative to your large charitable organizations. I don't have those figures offhand, though.
Okay. Be nice to know, but.
And perhaps those that are here could give you some.
Yeah, they could comment on that when they come up. I have speaker cards for most of them, so. So let's go ahead and take the speakers, if we don't have any more questions. First one is Laura Finuki. She wrote it out phonetically for me. Thanks for writing that out, because Ron was really impressed that I got that right.
I hope that he knows my name.
I was pretty impressed, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and city staff. My name is Laura Finuki. I'm the Associate Director of HIP Housing. I'm also a San Carlos resident, and I want to thank you for the over 20 years of funding support that you've provided to our home sharing program, and we're fortunate enough for you to consider our funding proposal tonight. We also have our self-sufficiency program for families with children. We manage two properties for you on Walnut Street. We own a property on Cherry Avenue, and we also have our group share home on Cedar Street for our families with children. So we've had a long collaborative relationship. As we know, housing is a critical issue here in the county. An average rent for a one-bedroom apartment is over $1,900 a month. Our subsidized housing waiting lists are essentially closed, and there's long waiting lists for affordable housing. HIP Housing's home sharing program really provides a very needed support for individuals to find affordable housing here in the county. When we compare our statistics from 2011 to 2012, we've seen already a 15% increase in the number of people who are applying to our program. For the City of San Carlos, most of our home providers are seniors, probably about 75% of our clients. And before they found a housemate, they're spending over 50% of their income on their housing costs. And when they actually find a housemate, they can really reduce their housing cost to about 28% of their income. We consider housing affordable when we spend about 30% or less of our income on housing costs. We have one client that we matched recently in our program. She's a senior, and she has, she had an income from employment, and then she also had social security income, and she had a renter living with her who was a family member. But things often change very quickly in somebody's life, and so she lost her family member who was paying rent. She ended up losing her job, and her unemployment income ran out, and she was really struggling paying her mortgage costs. She ended up finding a housemate through our program, and he's been living there now for almost a year, and her situation has really stabilized. What we do with our senior clients is we call them every three months to check in with them, to see how things are going. And a recent call made to her indicated that she is very thankful for this program. She was really almost ready to lose her housing, and now she has a very kind and considerate housemate living with her, has a stable rental income, and she's actually, they share meals together, and she says they're really helping each other out a lot during these difficult economic times. So through all of our programs, we find and find, we keep people housed, about 1,400 people a year through our programs and properties, and we can't do that work alone. We thank you very much for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions? I'm just curious, maybe you would know, what is your overhead?
85% of our budget goes to direct services for the program.
That's great. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Laura Bent from Samaritan House.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. I want to thank you on behalf of Samaritan House for your ongoing willingness to support our programs and services that we provide, that we consider vital to the clients that we serve. Last fiscal year, Samaritan House served two individuals who were residents of San Carlos within our Safe Harbor Emergency and Transitional Shelter programs. These clients received excellent care from our housing, health, and employment case managers, as well as a bed and food each day that they stayed with us. In addition, 167 low-income residents from the City of San Carlos utilized the homelessness prevention services provided by Samaritan House. Our caseworkers provided them with individual counseling, medical appointments to our clinics, food for their families, advocacy and referrals to other agencies that could be of service to them. I think also of further importance for you to know is that 10 of those families living in the City of San Carlos received, on average, about $2,000 in rental assistance so that they could remain housed here in the City of San Carlos when they were going through a crisis within their families. I think that's a great example of how we leverage our funds and complement the funds that you assist us with to make sure that the clients are served. To answer your question, we run about 85 to 90% of our services, direct costs go to our clients. So again, we thank you, and we believe that we are really providing vital services to the residents of San Carlos, and we again thank you for all of your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next is, I know the first name is Chris, and I can't read the last name here. I think it's Kanter?
Kanter, yes.
Kanter. Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Chris Kanter, Vice President with InVision Shelter Network, or many of you may know us historically as Shelter Network. Our name changed in July when we acquired, merged, a Santa Clara County-based organization called InVision, but it's, you know, same leadership and high-quality services. We are enormously grateful for the City of San Carlos's partnership in our work for almost two decades now. This, I mean, obviously homelessness in recent years has been a challenge. We provide emergency shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. It's been interesting that, in this, this past year, we saw 58% increase in the number of San, City of San Carlos residents coming through our doors for shelter. So obviously, I mean, we see that in a lot of different communities, but we welcome your partnership. Our average stay in shelter right now is about 120 days, so at the recommended level of funding, that works out to about $11 per person per day. It's certainly a lot cheaper than any kind of, you know, emergency room visit and so forth. So I think it's a very cost-effective investment. I am pleased to say that we work with, I think, every single one of the organizations listed here, and we do, our services complement each other. In regards to the, to our administrative overhead, we're typically just under 20%. This year, we're at about 22% to 23%, largely because of the merger and some investments that we have to make. None of the City of San Carlos's funds will be used for this, for the merger process. Any questions?
No. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Diana Comte.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here speaking on behalf of Parca, and I'm here primarily to thank you and to let you know how much we appreciate this funding for our Cedar Street residents. So some of you have visited the Cedar Street facility. It's a residential program for eight adults with developmental disabilities. This grant is to renovate the bathrooms. This is, obviously, that all that money goes to benefit the clients who reside there. I just want you to know that there are very few options to find money to maintain facilities. We have, we've been getting consistent rate cuts since 2008 from the state requiring us to do more and more fundraising, which is just kind of what the name of the game is in nonprofits. But this is a very important program for us. We're very happy to be residents of San Carlos. We have some, eight very happy adults who live there and love being part of this community, and we really appreciate your ongoing support for this program. Our administrative overcost, overhead rate through the agency-wide is 15%. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mary Watt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I just wanted to say a little bit about the Call Primrose Center. I'm Mary Watt. I'm the executive director and also a citizen of the City of San Carlos. We are a local nonprofit that is celebrating our 30th year this year of changing lives with each act of giving. And while we're a very small organization, we consider ourselves to be a very mighty organization. I'm the only full-time employee that we have. We have a little bit of part-time temp help, and the rest is all volunteers. So one of the key things that we really leverage is volunteer help. Many of our volunteers are from the City of San Carlos. Our volunteers range in age from nine to 95, and so it really encompasses a great cross segment of the community, actually being able to give back and help those in need because of the building that we're in and where we're located, and so we have a strong volunteer component. One of the things I really enjoy about coming to meetings like this, and I get to see all of my friends from all of the other agencies, and when you look at the list up here, it really does take all the different groups to work together. I can take a look at some of those right up there. Shelter Network, for example, you have to go through a referral process before you can get to them. So we're a gatekeeper to that referral process and work with them closely on that and collaborate with them on all kinds of things throughout the years. HIP Housing, we disseminate the information on their home sharing program. I get that every month from Laura. We pass that along to our clients who take that then and go see them to see about getting into that shared housing program and the other things that they have, or reverse mortgage programs, et cetera. One of the things on the bottom, Mental Health Association, I noticed that they're not recommended for funding, but we provide food support for all of their buildings, including delivering to their buildings all over the peninsula and bringing in their clients for food and other services at our location. So we're all very, very well-connected. Our overhead is extremely low. It's about 85% going to direct services right now. Traditionally, we were what, at 100%? We had recent cutbacks from two local congregations that could no longer fully fund my position, and also no longer able to give us the free rent that we had for many, many years. However, I would assure you that none of the money from the City of San Carlos would go to cover my salary or the rent. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have one, if the rest of the council doesn't. Yours is the only organization labeled as a Christian action, so I was just curious, do you coordinate with churches in San Carlos?
We do, actually, in contact almost constantly with Epiphany Episcopal, Trinity Presbyterian, The Vineyard. We help coordinate a lot of times when they have homeless individuals coming to them or being on their property, and them not being able to know quite what to do with that, so we network and actually send out email alerts and advice on topics of that nature constantly, and we get support from most of the congregations in San Carlos.
I would like to talk to you sometime.
Sounds good.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Peter, Peter, you know who you are. Would you come to the podium and maybe pronounce your last name for me? Thank you, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Peter Villarreal. I'm from Mid-Penn Housing. I work in our development team, and we're actually very glad for the opportunity to apply for this funding and. apply for this funding. Since this is a first opportunity, I guess I understand from Mark, there's an opportunity to apply for these funds directly, especially since we have our affordable housing project here in the City of San Carlos, Loryola Oaks specifically. So I wanted to open-
I'm sorry, just so folks know, Loryola Oaks is, give a little description of what that is.
So yeah, I was going to give you a little background about Mid-Penn Housing and sort of how we got involved. So Mid-Penn Housing helped co-develop with the City of San Carlos by providing the, essentially the land that was owned as part of a, I believe, it was all part of a development that was partnered with Mid-Penn and the City of San Carlos, County San Mateo, and I believe the state. So this was a limited partnership that was set up essentially to acquire the site and essentially build 16 townhouse-style units on 901, excuse me, it was on one of the east cuts, 901, sorry, 907 East San Carlos Avenue, close to the 101. So it's actually been, we've been operating the property for the last 15-plus years, and I think the challenge has been maintaining a lot of the property's physical condition. And the challenge has been maintaining affordable rentals, is quite this balance of maintaining affordable rents and maintaining the operating expenses of the property. So to answer your question about what our overhead cost is, typically, it's really for our property manager, which is approximately 10% of our cost. But for the most part, our goal is to invest entirely in maintaining the housing that we currently have, since it's a limited scope. So we're very excited to tackle some of these items that we proposed. We originally had wanted a much larger funding, but we understand the needs for the community. You know, some of the folks listed on this, on your awards list, are essentially partners that we've worked on on other projects as well for our services. So, you know, unfortunately, this property has very tight funding, and we're not able to fully connect with our committee partners, but we try our best to reach out to the community for our residents. And to talk a little bit about who we serve, we serve residents who typically are living at 50 and 60% of the area median income. So these are folks that we typically move in that making maybe 30 to 40% of the area income, so really serving the poorest folks within our San Carlos community. So we're glad that we have a partner with the city, and I'm hoping to see if I can answer any questions you may have about the project.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Those are all the speakers. Any discussion on the item?
No, I would, I would move that we approve six funding grants totaling $91,000 for, that would be for Parca, Envision, Hip Housing, Mid-Penn Housing, Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities, the Call Primrose Center, and the mental, oh, not that one, because that one's not getting any. Those six funding grants for affordable housing programs.
Second.
Actually, there's, isn't there seven?
But we're stripping that one out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stripped that one out.
Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Okay. So we've had a motion, we've had a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And then, so we need a separate one on the Samaritan House.
Okay. I move that we approve the funding grant for Samaritan House for $7,000 for affordable housing programs.
Second.
Okay. Now we can do roll call again.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
abstained.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And just one comment, you all thanked us, but it's really our community's money, so I think thanking the citizens of San Carlos, the developers who come into our town and build and so forth, those are the people who fund this really, and they're the ones to be thanked. So, but thank you for being here tonight and answering questions and presenting your materials.
And if I may say, I would like to thank the organizations that work so hard to stretch their dollars to provide these services to the members of our community, because I know that's a very challenging thing to do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Thanks a lot. Okay. That brings us to our next item, which is 9C, and this is a resolution authorizing the City of San Carlos to become a member of the San Mateo County Subregion of ABAG and to accept their, what's called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or commonly called RENA.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council. Tonight, you are being asked to consider authorization of the city to become a member of the San Mateo County Subregion to locally administer the Association of Area Governments, or ABAG's Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, process, and accept the city's assigned housing allocation of 596 units. Bit of background and introduction on the RENA process itself. State law does require each city and county to plan for their fair share of the region's housing needs. The State Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, issues the RENA to the ABAG, who then will distribute throughout the region the allocation numbers or number of housing units. ABAG's distribution of the numbers to the jurisdictions is based on a fair share component that takes into account employment, transit, past RENA performance, income allocation, and any adopted priority development areas referred to as PDAs. The law does allow cities in a county to join together to form a subregion represented by RCAG to administer the RENA that allows for the trading of units between willing partners within a county, as well as allowing the opportunity for streamlining of efforts and costs to prepare state-mandated housing elements. The RENA number itself, it's a key part of all, every state-mandated housing element in informing both of the number and the affordability levels of housing units that the city must adequately plan for. The law does not require, however, the construction of the allocated units, but simply, again, for the planning and the opportunity for the allocated units to be produced. The next housing element cycle is due to the state HCD by December 30th of 2014. During the previous housing element cycle, through adoption of a City Council resolution, the city did participate in the San Mateo County Subregion and was one of the earlier cities to have their housing elements certified. Excuse me. RCAG is now asking again that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution to become a member of the San Mateo County Subregion for the upcoming 2014 to 2022 housing element cycle, as well as accept the assigned housing allocation. Again, this is a consideration before you tonight. So the numbers, the specific RENA allocation dedicated to San Carlos. San Carlos's allocation through ABAG, as well as through the subregional process, is 596 units. The allocation of 596 units is similar to the previous cycle, which San Carlos was allocated, 599. Since that time, very few units have actually been constructed that were planned for. The city does have the opportunity to carry over units planned for in the prior cycle, apply it to the upcoming cycle. That, combined with some preliminary research of existing vacant and underutilized sites within the city, does indicate that the city would likely be able to adequately plan for the allocated 596 units. Although the need to trade units with other jurisdictions in the county is not indicated at this point for the city, there are direct benefits that the city could obtain in joining the subregion. Some of these benefits do include the fact if the city is not part of the subregion, should other jurisdictions appeal their allocation numbers, ABAG could assign additional units to the city or to any city that's not part of a subregion. Other benefits include the ability to participate in a more collaborative approach in housing element preparation that would result in increase in cost savings and time efficiencies through the sharing of information between the jurisdictions within San Mateo County, the streamlining of data research efforts, and minimizing the duplication of work involved. Participation in the subregion will also encourage timely completion of the city's housing element, which could provide other incentives down the road for the city, including that if the housing element is certified on time, this is a new incentive that HCD is offering, that the city will not have to adopt another housing element for eight years instead of every other four years, which has been the prior requirement. And an additional benefit with early housing element certification is both the streamlined review and direct coordination with HCD. With that, the recommendation is for the City Council to adopt a resolution to become a member of the countywide subregion, the entity that would locally administer ABAG's RENA process and accept the assigned housing allocation of 596 units. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Questions? Mr. Olber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. Of the potential participants in the subregion, do we know how many of them have already elected to join?
We would be, San Carlos would be the last city within the county to approve a resolution to join the subregion.
Okay. Thank you. My other question was, when I was looking at your, the table in the staff report about the allocation of housing tiered by income, I just was curious about the definitions of the various income levels. You don't have to go into great detail. Are they keyed off of median income, percentage of median income, something like that?
They are. They are all keyed off of percentage of area median income, which is determined by the state HCD. And for San Mateo County, it's a little over 101,000 based on a family of four. Area median income is, correct.
Not now, but just offline, I would appreciate staff just providing me what the numbers are, the income levels are for those various categories. Oh, and I guess I can do the math myself with 101. Thank you. It always helps to have a numbers guy with you. Thank you.
We didn't have that in our staff report, so that's why the question came up. Sorry. 101,000. Above moderate income.
Actually, that's a good question. What is above moderate income if moderate's 120?
Market rate units.
Okay. Thank you. Wait a minute. What? No. No. If the median, the median, the median, the moderate income would be equivalent to a family of four, income of 120-ish thousand dollars. So another question, another way to put it is, what is the income level for above moderate income? There is no limit? There is no limit? Okay.
Love the AMI.
Got it. Thank you.
So what happens when a project proposes building no moderate to very low-income housing and just pays into a fund? How does that affect these numbers? Not at all?
It would be factored into the HCD consideration of the city's prepared housing element. And so with the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies from the last housing element cycle, it's anticipated that the review criteria will change and take into account that very fact.
Can you put that in layman's terms?
Sure. So it won't affect these numbers, per se, because these numbers do not require the actual development of those units. It just requires the city to adequately plan for such. And so HCD has specific criteria or assumptions that they apply to, for example, vacant sites, underutilized sites, and different projects, and what the affordability components within each may be.
Okay. But if we currently have some site that's being looked at, and they're considering, they take that into consideration in these numbers, right? And then that site gets developed, but the developer says, hey, I don't want to build any of these units, I just want to put money into a fund. That's sort of kicking the can down the road, so to speak. It seems to me it affects the whole matrix, because it, number one, the site went away, so, right? You're more built-out, but when you achieved your more built-out status from where you were before, you don't have any more very low to moderate income housing than you had before. You just have money in the bank to hopefully pay for it later. And now you have fewer sites to apply it to.
And so that-
Just thinking here.
Right. And so that is, that is a concern of the ability to meet the affordability components of the mandated allocated total of 596 units, but that type of criteria is used in the, in HCD's assumption as to whether, again, the state-mandated housing element, which has specific statutes and criteria that it needs to meet, will be taken into consideration in light of these times. So we don't have, there's not a specific criteria list at this point that I could answer that question, how much that would factor in, but it is a point of consideration that is our understanding that HCD will be factoring into their new review process.
Okay. And again, and you had went through this, I believe, but under their current review process, what are the factors they use right now, or the levels of current median income of houses and also the value of homes?
They have several different assumption criteria. Some of it's based geographically, based on county, based on site, based on proximity to transit, based on assumed development potential, on specific site area dimensions, and things of this nature.
So they, I know they had some discussions where they were talking about applying API scores with schools. They were talking about applying income levels, median income level of residents, crime rates, some other factors that deal with quality of life issues, they said. Where did that end up? They still haven't adopted that? That's in the next round, or what?
In the upcoming cycle, correct. They are developing a very specific criteria checklist, unlike has been available in prior cycles. And these types of judgment criteria would, from my understanding, are factors that they will be considering including in this new very specific criteria list.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
You know, just, Mr. Mayor, taking off of what the conversation you started, it almost seems to me that, given the option for developers to pay in lieu fees for rental units, as opposed to being, having to build the affordable housing units, I know it says we only have to plan for, we don't actually have to make sure that there's construction of, but you could see a situation where if hypothetically, all the property in the city was, that was potentially developable for rental housing, was developed for rental housing, and nobody wanted to actually build any affordable housing units, we would suddenly no longer be able to plan for it, because there'd be no suitable land anymore. It almost seems to me that the combination of these requirements and that court ruling are that cities would have to restrict, I don't even know if this is possible, restrict the construction of rental housing and instead require the construction of condos and townhouses and whatnot, which is, I understand, is still an area where cities can say you have to build a certain number of affordable units in the plan. Has that been discussed as part of this process? And I just see a potential conflict here.
Not specifically changing the city's inclusionary housing requirements for requirements on for-sale rent, or for-sale developments versus rental developments, but in the broader discussion, and my understanding, all jurisdictions within San Mateo County and likely throughout the state, given the dissolution of the redevelopment agency and housing funds that were there in the last cycle that are not here in the current cycle, our criteria factor that HCD will need to change their existing evaluation flow from what they had in the past to what they're doing currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Not sure what that meant, but you spoke in layman's terms that time, but I- Not sure what that meant, but you spoke in layman's terms that time, but I was just trying to follow. A little difficult, but Mr. Olber seemed to get it, so.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Any other questions? All right.
I move that we adopt resolution number 2013...
13.
13, authorizing the city of San Carlos to become a member of the San Mateo County subregion, an entity that would locally administer ABAG's regional housing needs allocation process and acceptance of the allocation assigned by the subregion of 596 units for the city of San Carlos.
Second.
By the way, I didn't ask the question of staff, but I did ask the city manager earlier today, went in and talked to him about this, about what exactly happens if we don't adopt these numbers, don't accept the numbers. And the answer was basically, there are ways for the state to hurt us through grant funding and so forth if we don't play the game, as it, as it were. So just wanted council to know that. I have a few items on this that concern me, and I'm going to speak those out, but does anybody have any discussion items on this at all?
Well, I'd just like to say, you know, being on City-County Association of Governments and CCG, the last round, not this round, the last round, we were the first county in the state of California to just get a subregion. Before, if you had a problem with the numbers that you had, you had to go back to ABAG and through, back through the state, and it was very cumbersome and just crazy. And by forming the subregion, which we were able to do last time, we were able to trade among ourselves, as we did this time, trade among ourselves, and now other counties are jumping on the wagon that we started in forming subregions and working within themselves. It's, it's a process that is difficult, but this, as you said, the rules of the game or the game, whatever you want to call it, there needs to be housing for people, as Councilmember Olber asked and has indicated up there, not everybody makes 101,000 dollars in this county, or are able to afford even 183 units of market rate. And if we don't provide some of this, or at least attempt, and again, it's an attempt, as Stephanie said, to do this, we basically are going to have cities of, well, I didn't even know where everybody lives, the other folks, where, I don't know where anybody's going to live in this county. Maybe they'll have to live in other counties or other places. And then if the whole nine Bay Area does it, doesn't do it, I don't know where they live. Maybe they live in Nevada. So I'm a proponent of this, and I know the mayor has some issues with it and certainly respect his opinion, but I think it's, it's a terrific situation to try to plan and at least have a guidepost to, a guideline to try to work through and provide some, some housing for folks that work in our communities and would like to live closer to their jobs and, again, participate in the, in our city. So anyway, enough of that. That's my comment.
I almost considered, look, I was looking at the resolution and trying to figure out, is there a way to agree to being a part of the subregion and then not agree to the rest of it? But actually, as I thought about it, and when I even talked to Mr. Malpe earlier today, I thought, you know, really, I'm opposed to the whole process. And so what's the point of accepting yourself into a subregion? The way I put it to him, I said, it's a little bit like, you know, being in a prison yard and the guard comes to you and says, we'll put you in a group and you can decide amongst yourselves which one's going to take the punishment today. You know, the...
Respectfully, I don't consider housing the punishment.
Well, I was just trying to think of some analogy to make the point. And that's a bit what it's like. If you're going to agree to be in the subregion, then you're going to agree to accept something of this, you know, whatever you want to call it, punishment, responsibility, it doesn't matter. The issue I have with this is, to me, owning property is a foundation block of our country, of the liberty that we are supposed to have. And it's anathema to me to have the state come along and tell us what to do. The idea of property ownership, what goes with that is that you can give your grievance or redress to local government and say to them, to this council, what you're doing to my property or my neighbor's property concerns me, and I wish to address you on that. When something comes down from an agency that's not even elected, from the state that is looking at us and saying, you have to build this much housing, I'm opposed to that. I think we're all big kids right here, and we can think of these things, we can manage these things as a council. And I think if we did that, I think you would find enough compassion, if that's what it takes, on the council to look at these kinds of things and say, for us to say to ourselves, you know, as we're doing our zoning and as we're doing our planning, we need to think about the fact that we're getting built out, and one of the factors of getting built out is that, you know, everybody wants to build a certain level of housing for certain income levels, and they don't want to address these issues. And that would be for us to decide and say, we as a community value diverse income levels and so forth, and we are going to put this into our codes and ordinances and so forth, and we're going to deal with this. That's for us to say, and then when we say that, people who own property in San Carlos can come to us and if they're concerned about it, and speak. But when something's going on in Sacramento or someplace distant, for someone to do that, they don't even know the meeting's taking place, and even if they did, they may not be able to go during the day or whatever. So to me, it's very tied and coupled to the idea of property ownership and property rights, and that's why I don't agree with this kind of process. And my last comment on this is, I've been on the council for over 11 years, and every year I've seen this come along, and every, every year I've pretty much just looked the other way and said, okay, fine. In recent years, I've started to vote against it, and in recent years, what I've seen also is, while it says this is a planning number only, and you don't actually have to build it, from my position on BPAC, what I'm seeing is, those days are over. You don't build it, they're going to be very serious about funding that you will not get because they're coupling transportation dollars to what you're doing with housing. And if you don't do the housing, you're not going to get the transportation dollars. And like I said, from my experience on BPAC and things that are happening there, BPAC being Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee with CCG, not to go into that acronym, but anyways, what I see going on in BPAC is they are starting to really put some teeth into this type of planning process, and it may not be a direct thing that you have to build this housing, but if you don't build it and you don't start performing, you're going to start seeing a reduction in dollars that pay for the things that Mr. Walter takes care of, our infrastructure. And I don't like that kind of thing. Our citizens pay taxes and they go to the state, and some of the, that money ought to come back. And to have all these strings attached and so forth, I just disagree with it, so. So that's my position, and that will explain my vote. Any other comments? We're ready for a vote?
Thank you for explaining that. I think that, that some of the, the numbers coming down from the state, if you want to phrase it that way, when you, when you take a look at the different cities, I'll focus on San Mateo County, a lot of people make the assumption that all of the cities have a below-market rate housing program, and that they specifically have a way of addressing affordable housing in different, in lieu fees or as a percentage. They do not all have that. And so I would just say, don't, don't feel as if we're being targeted. We have actually been out there as a city to say, we are taking things under our own, as you were mentioning, that we are taking some responsibility for how we want to see that happen in our city. And there, and there are some places that, that haven't fully embraced that. So I think there's some, some nuances there, that there's some messages being sent to some other locations other than ours, so I would just give you that as a thought when you're reading through, but I respect where you're coming from and understand why you're going to vote the way you are.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Gropro?
No. Okay, that brings us to item 9D, which is to approve a plan for the city in the chamber to hold building materials, a building materials business showcase event. And boy, if we ever should have changed the agenda, we could have put this earlier and, because Mr. Burchard is still here.
Mr. Farkas is here, too.
Mr. Farkas is still here, too. All right. Mr. Sawicki.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Again, Mark Sawicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Among the council's strategic plan objectives for economic development in the current six month period is to present for action by February 15th, a plan for a business showcase event. This is an item that both the Economic Development Advisory Commission and a reconstituted Economic Development Partnership have been working on. They've both met twice on this matter to try to formulate a plan. And just for your understanding, Economic Development Partnership is a group, members of staff, members of EDAC, members of the chamber, that work together to, to take action on items in between our respective meetings. So they've, they've done a tremendous amount of work in pulling this together. Also, to gather more cost information and ideas and to be able to implement swiftly, if this is approved, the EDP had prepared a request for proposals for an event and marketing coordinator to assist chamber and city staff with, with such an event if we are to move forward. The chamber released that RFP on January 30th, and proposals were due today. I'm aware of at least two proposals that we've received. So the actual event plan currently, and we're, we're seeking your advice and input and approval to move forward, the idea would be to, the goal would be to increase awareness of and generate business for San Carlos businesses that are in the building materials, home construction, and remodeling industry. This is a very large sector in San Carlos, and it's an unusually large sector for San Carlos relative to other cities. It's something that we want to put our, our name on and take credit for, attract more customers, and attract more, more businesses on the east side that do similar activities. We want to be the regional home for, for building materials. The concept of the event would be to, to limit it to San Carlos businesses in this, in this arena. We would market it to Bay Area residents, you know, in, both inside the city and, and well outside the city, and that's all going to be, depending on how much marketing and advertising budget we have. We are going to market it to architects, contractors, designers, and realtors. We want to have food, entertainment, and prizes as part of this, so it's not just a dry trade show. There's actually going to be activity to make people excited to be there. We picked a date, which we thought was important so that we have something to work towards. We picked Saturday, June 22nd. We want the sun to be shining. We have looked at a couple of different places we could have it. We've thought about the Circle Star parking lot. If those, if those buildings get, get filled, that's probably not going to be a great place. We've thought about closing a street. We think Commercial Street, which is kind of in the center of the east side, and we have Kelly Moore's on that block, which is a, our great local paint company. We've also thought about the vacant lot at 767 Industrial, if that has not moved forward with any development yet. The event would be coordinated by the city and the chamber with assistance of a professional event and marketing consultant, as I mentioned, with the RFP. We're asking for the city to contribute $15,000. Again, that goes back to the chamber contract, which you have approved earlier. We would be outreach-ing for sponsors and getting as much additional sponsor capital as we could. We estimate booth revenue to be about $4,500. We estimate total expenses to be anywhere from $25,000 to $45,000. And again, the range is relative to how much money we can raise. The more money we can raise, the more advertising we would do to make the, to make the event successful. We're not looking for it to be a profit-making ventures, but in, in the first year, we want it to be a successful event, so we would put any money that we can raise back into the event. And lastly, the Economic Development Advisory Commission approved a motion on a, on a seven-zero vote to recommend that council approve this item. And I'm available for questions, as is Chair Farkas of the EDAC and David Burchard from the chamber.
All right. Questions? Mr. Olber?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sawicki. Just a quick question. What, what happens if the event operates at a loss? How do the, how does the, you know, if there is any remaining liability, financial liability, how does that get split between the sponsors?
I think by the city making the contribution upfront. We know we have at least that many dollars. We can, the chamber is, is very good at estimating costs and revenue from, from doing the farmer's market and the art and wine fair, so they're, they're, they're pretty dialed in on a, on a budget. And then the event coordinator and consultant we would be relying on as well to, to help us be sure that we are shouldering enough dollars before we start laying anything out. But again, the, the level of advertising is, is the buffer. So if we don't have enough sponsorship money coming in, we're not going to lay out the dollars for advertising. So we don't, we are not going to put ourselves into a loss. We're not going to make any commitments that we can't fill because we haven't received the dollars yet.
All right. I think I see how that, that could, that could work here, but that may be a subject that I, as a general principle, that may be a subject I want to talk to Mr. Malpe about offline. Thank you.
My only question is, how can we make sure that whoever is going to be occupying those Circle Star, that Circle Star building and doing the $15 million worth of expenses that they will come to the business showcase event and then spend the $15 million there here in San Carlos? I'd like, I'd like to know what your answer to that is.
I don't think I have an answer to that.
They may have moved in by then.
I, I think they may have a fair amount of work to do. They'll still be doing it at that point.
I think that might be a matter of timing.
Yes.
Other questions? I have a few. I suppose this might be for some direction from council, but would there be, what would your opinion be about if we weren't quite so, I think the word would be parochial, is, you know, keeping it only San Carlos', San Carlos' businesses and maybe reaching out a little bit beyond our borders? Because I, to me, anyways, the idea is, we're the target place, and there's this, there's this synergy that we have because we have so many businesses that do home improvement. But, but then if you just go over to Harbor in Belmont, you've got the door and window company. And if you go a little bit south into Redwood City, you've got, actually, it's a resident of San Carlos that owns the business that does trim work in Redwood City, which, and I don't think we have that in, in San Carlos, anybody that's doing molding and crown molding and those kinds of things. So perhaps just pushing out a little bit from our borders, and especially to Mr. Olber's question about, you know, what if we're not making revenue, if we just, if we're not making revenue, especially, let's not be afraid to push out a little bit beyond our own borders. I suppose that could be a discussion item for us, but don't leave yet because I have another question I want to ask him. And it affects you guys, yeah, so if you, if you would wait.
Nonprofits?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Would that, would there be, what would your, your opinion be about that?
I think the, the idea was to make it a San Carlos business showcase. That's what we're trying to drive the business to San Carlos, to San Carlos businesses. That's, that's going to result in sales tax and economic activity and jobs in San Carlos. But I could see the point of, if we don't have those particular companies and they are nearby, it's something that we could consider, and if we have available booths, but I think we, our priority is San Carlos businesses.
Okay. All right. My other question is, and the reason I asked these folks to maybe stick around and hear this question is, might we want to invite some nonprofits with the idea being, you know, you're improving your own home, you might want to know about one of these organizations and help somebody who doesn't have a home or, or, you know, so forth, and open up some booths for some of these nonprofits that are associated with housing? Could we do that?
I think there's opportunities for that, yes.
Okay. Good. All right. And they're nodding their heads, I think they would like it. All right. Okay. Those are my questions. Oh, I had one other question, was, could we consider, if this is successful, maybe we would want to actually declare, you know, the third Saturday in June as, you know, Home Improvement Day or something like that, and make a declaration from the diocese that, for the city of San Carlos, that, you know, the third Saturday in June is, is Home Improvement Day?
Just building on that, I mean, why do we need...
Just building on that, I mean, why do we need to wait for it to be, prove itself successful to do that?
I just would hate to declare it and then have it be a bomb, that's why. But if you want to, you know, we can discuss it, but I just...
There's nothing wrong with being optimistic. It may help the marketing a little bit.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Can we release the nonprofits now?
Yes, they can go if they like.
You can release the nonprofits.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You know, to the chair, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a good, it's an interesting one to expand a little bit, but as Mr. Sewicki said, I mean, if we have some extra space or something, maybe, but I'll tell you what, we're putting the money up for this thing, and it's a San Carlos deal, and it's for the businesses in San Carlos. And we have a lot of variety, I think, of businesses. How many booths are we anticipating? I mean, you must have some ballpark idea, 20, 25? Or 10, five, six, seven? 30. So, that's just, I think that's going to be really a lot. And, again, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't allow it of people to come in, but this is a San Carlos deal for San Carlos business, and I think it should stay that way. Now, the nonprofits, another story. I think we should have some booths for nonprofits because that's a whole different dynamic. But I don't necessarily think that folks, even though somebody may live in San Carlos, if their business is in Redwood City or their business is in Harbor in Belmont, I would like to keep it pretty tight to the, just personally, the folks in San Carlos. Not trying to be too, you know, closed in this, but we're the ones putting up the money for this puppy. I mean, they may pay a little bit for a booth, but the city and the Chamber and other folks are putting up the money. So, anyway, that's just my opinion.
Anybody else have an opinion about that? Mr. Collins?
I don't have any guilt feelings at all about this being parochial and being San Carlos only. You know, having been on EDAC and talking a lot about promoting San Carlos businesses, that's exactly what we should be doing. This is an investment. I'm not really concerned about the city making money. I don't think we're supposed to make money. I think our businesses are supposed to make money. And that's why, I think this is just a wonderful idea, we ought to try it. As far as declaring the third Saturday in June Business Showcase Day or whatever we end up calling it, that's fine. We could even wait and see how it goes, but sometimes these things start small. They start, when they're not very successful, and you learn from the things you do the first year, and you keep refining it, and pretty soon it grows and it becomes a real successful event. So, I just think that if we are going to entertain any outside businesses, I would ask our own businesses if they think that there are complementary businesses in Belmont or Redwood City that might want to participate. But I'm with Mr. Griselli. I believe this ought to be a San Carlos event. We're trying to promote business in this town.
I suppose we could, the idea of declaring a day, we could throw that back to Mr. Farkas and EDAC and let them think about it.
That's what I was thinking. I'd love to get their input on it. And as far as expanding it beyond San Carlos, I was going to say what the tail end of Mr. Collins's comment, that would not be my preference. It's certainly not starting out, but I would sort of look to the sponsors and participants of it, not sponsors, to the participants of it, to see whether or not they saw some synergy in there. And if they do, because, you know, they believe it's going to promote their business, then fine, let's do it.
Yeah, okay, that's, Ms. Clapper?
Yeah, I agree with all of the different points that have been shared. It sounds like a great event. I think we should leave it up to the folks that are going to be running the event to decide if it would be beneficial to have a particular day and what is the target market and how would they like to have that phrased, so.
Okay, well, I think they've heard some ideas. I think primarily, you're looking for us to approve this so you can get funding. Is that right? Right, okay. So, are we okay with the funding amount and do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we, is this a resolution or just a...
It's a recommendation, so approve a plan for the...
We just approve a plan for city and chamber commerce to hold building materials business showcase event?
Second.
And to contribute?
$15,000.
Yeah, the $15,000 contribution.
And to contribute approximately $15,000 for the event coordination.
And I'll second that, too.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Growcott?
Yes, just don't spend it all in one place, okay?
Spend it in San Carlos.
Yeah, but in San Carlos, that's right. All right. Comment letter on Caltrain, JPB, California High Speed Rail Authority Agreement. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brian Mora, Assistant City Manager. As council may be aware, there is a joint powers agreement between High Speed Rail and Caltrain to electrify the corridor, to put in some modern signaling equipment, and if money is available ultimately to share the electrified route. This comment, this agreement has been in effect for a number of years, and when it was first entered into, it envisioned a four-track system throughout the state. As you probably know, two years ago, when the project was put on hold, three local elected officials, Anna Schu, Joe Semidion, and Rich Gordon, came up with a new plan called the blended system where the system would share tracks and that most of the route would be two-tracks only, not four. And, in fact, if less than nine trains per hour at peak run, there's no need to go beyond two tracks. So, there was a feeling that there was a need to update the JPA agreement. A new JPA agreement has been drafted, and at the recent meeting of the Local Policymakers' Group with, where Mr. Collins represents you and Mr. Olbert is the alternate, this document was circulated, and cities were given until February 13th to comment on it. What you see attached is a draft comment letter for the mayor to sign that staff is proposing. On page two, you see five areas that we would recommend that San Carlos comment on. And basically, what we're recommending is that the council authorize the letter. In a nutshell, we're in agreement with the notion of changing the focus of that agreement from the four-track system to the primarily two-track system. But we do point out a couple of things. One is, we'd like Caltrain to be the lead agency as much as possible. We'd like to see adverse impacts avoided, which in San Carlos actually means that an overhead system actually has less impact, at least in this community, than an underground system. And finally, that we want to highlight the fact that we continue to have some local issues which Caltrain and the JPB and High Speed Rail are not necessarily in favor of putting in this document, but we want to alert them to the fact that it is likely that in future comment letters that we anticipate sending to them, we will bring them up again. Notably, some of the future commitments that Caltrain has mentioned during the Transit Village process would probably be one of the more notable of those items. So, those are the highlights. As I say, take a look at the letter. If there are any amendments or changes, we would be interested in council's suggestions there. And, again, since Councilmember Collins and Olbert represent you in this process, you may wish to hear from them as you deliberate.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions right now for Mr. Mora?
No.
Okay. We may later, but, okay. Do we want to hear from Mr. Collins and...
Well, being that Mr. Olbert hasn't yet been to a meeting, because I haven't missed any, no, I've read over the letter. I, pardon me?
That report will be short.
No, I think the letter as it's currently written pretty much accurately reflects our views as, it protects our interests as a city. But I would be interested in hearing any input from my fellow council members if any of you think that there's things that we should add. But as it sits right now, I think it, for the most part, it addresses what our concerns are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There's one aspect of this that I kind of struggle with a bit, because it's a bit of a complex situation. And that's specifically that, and while I don't know what the current council would come down on the issue on, because we, when we came down on our position that I recall, it was a 3-2 vote, but Mr. Klein was still on the council at the time, and we haven't actually had a similar vote since Ms. Clapper has joined us. But you may recall that, my recollection is, the council took a position saying we were opposed to four tracks in San Carlos. I think I recall the nuances, we weren't necessarily saying we were, you know, that was the ultimate resistance level of that, but we clearly were signaling that we did not want to see four tracks in San Carlos. But it was a 3-2 vote. Depending upon how this council feels today, this letter doesn't necessarily communicate that nuance, okay? It says that, you know, it says that, or it's proposed to say that we are supportive of, among other things, the blended system concept, which could very well mean we are supportive of putting four tracks through San Carlos. And so, I actually think before, if we can tonight, and this may be a question for council, before we actually approve the form of the letter or give direction to staff on what we'd like to see in it, I think we ought to perhaps revisit that issue, see whether or not the current council still feels that way. Because if we do, we might want to think about amending the letter. Oh, one other quick point. What makes it complex is, in my mind, is there are scenarios, because we do not control ourselves whether or not four tracks will appear in San Carlos. That could be forced on us, okay? And if it were to be forced on us, there are things that we might like that would be in that situation better than just being forced to take whatever it is that a third party decides. I'm thinking here of elevating the lines as opposed to just enlarging the berm, okay? So, my feeling would be, again, if the council still is supportive of not wanting to see four tracks in San Carlos, that the nuance that we ask staff to work in here is, we don't want to see four tracks in San Carlos, but we're still in, you know, if that ends up happening, there are still things that we'd like to see the way, we'd like to see it in certain particular ways, such as elevating the tracks.
I have some similar concerns to what you're talking about, Mr. Olbert, because almost immediately after the vote on the blended system, in the paper the next day or the next day after that, a spokesperson for Caltrain came out with the statement that what Mr. Hill and Ms. Spear and all these, Jerry Hill and so forth, what they agreed to, what they thought they agreed to being a two-track system actually is not a two-track system. And it will not be a two-track system on the peninsula for a good many miles because of other issues, and then the passing tracks were mentioned as well. And so, that brings up a strong concern with me, especially with what we've talked about with the east side folks and Old County Road, and, you know, they don't certainly want to see some kind of cantilever system that has air rights over Old County Road, because that brings the trains closer to their homes and impacts the noise issues. So, I don't feel like I have an answer on that. And this letter, when I read it, doesn't address that question. Furthermore, I'm not, and this is related to all of this, I'm not sure why we're saying the underground has less of an impact on San Carlos, because especially if there is, as Mr. Olbert said, maybe the four tracks is forced on us and we have no choice. My opinion is, if that's going to be the case, I'd rather see the whole darn thing underground or in a trench. To me, that opens things up for us. It opens up land, because you can build things on top of the trench or the tunnel, if it's tunnelled. It certainly changes something that folks were not too happy about at one time, being the berm. I don't know, I'm not sure that, I don't know why we're saying that an underground is less impact, except that it means construction, deconstruction of something that we spent so much money building.
Through the mayor, you know, we could talk about that a little bit without going too much in depth to it tonight, because there's been a lot of information presented in the past that we don't have with us tonight, so we could certainly revisit that issue. But in the past, the studies that were done on the trench option in particular showed that the width of the trench, because of the support facilities that have to be built into such a thing, would mean in San Carlos that it would be likely that Old County Road would be taken out. There would be, no longer be an Old County Road. And, you know, one of the other...
Or the Transit Village. I'm just kidding.
No, right, yeah. That's been mentioned, but that is not, in fact, the case. And the other information that we learned about the trench is that just because you have a trench, doesn't mean that you can just, you know, it's all available land above the trench. One's, there's lots of openings in the trench, and two, you can't put just anything on the trench, including roads going across it. So, that was really, that was sort of the foundation of some of the facts that led to the overhead option being what, at the time, the council described as the least impactful option to the community. But we could certainly revisit that at some point. Again, you know, this is, there's not a lot of design information to support any of these options at this point. It's still a project that's very much maturing in terms of information.
Let me add through the chair a little bit to that. In 2010, when the council previously gave us direction, and I'm sure some of you, particularly who are on council, remember that, look at both underground and overhead designs, one of the unique things that we did at the San Carlos staff level that some of the other cities frankly have not done even to this day, is they haven't looked at both sets of plans. We did. We did a full design study with High Speed Rail. We looked at the underground plans. We looked at the overhead plans. This was back when Robert Wild, you probably remember, was Public Works Director. And I think one of the, as the city manager just indicated, one of the things we saw almost immediately was that because an underground system has, by definition, pretty much a wider right-of-way take than does an overhead system, that in San Carlos, you would seriously impact Old County Road, and you would also potentially impact some of the private and residential properties on the other side of Old County Road. Part of the challenge in San Carlos is because the train depot is a historic site, you can't move it, and so it effectively defines one of the boundaries of the project. It's also the case that because you have to look at this project across multiple cities, and most cities are more interested, quite frankly, in protecting the businesses and the properties along El Camino than they are Old County. Our community may be a little different in that regard. All of those things add up to much more of an impact in an underground alignment. And I think the point in the draft that we're trying to make is saying to the Caltrain staff that it could be that in some communities, a overhead alignment might have more bad impacts. In San Carlos, the opposite is clearly the case, and since we have seen the actual plans, we know that. Now, when we worked with High Speed Rail and Caltrain staff, the original overhead design also had some impacts that were negative, but nowhere near as bad as underground. And by virtue of coming up with the alternate design that we've referred to previously, we were able actually to remove pretty much all of the negative impacts, including negative impacts of Old County Road. So, in this particular draft, that's the reason that the reference is made, is to be on record and to point out that while in other cities, underground might have some beneficial impacts, in San Carlos, it has some pretty severe negative consequences.
If I could add one thing, Mr. Mora, maybe you can let me know if I'm remembering this conversation correctly, when we were at that first working policymaker group meeting, Marion Lee indicated that there's a very strong message going from the peninsula cities, almost in their entirety, to the High Speed Rail Authority, that the two-track system or the blended system was overwhelmingly our choice, and that the four-track system was not really preferred by anybody or any of the cities. I mean, that seemed to be the theme of the letter, and Samtrans people seemed to get that message loud and clear.
Yeah, through the chair, I think Councilmember Collins is exactly correct. In fact, my recollection of that first policymaker meetings, I think she actually said that four or five different times, just to emphasize the fact that Caltrain and High Speed Rail staff had gotten the message that with perhaps one or two exceptions, none of the cities were particularly interested in passing tracks, although as Councilmember Olbert correctly points out, it may be the case that a couple cities get passing tracks. And that also, by the way, is the reason that the letter is structured in such a way that we say, up to eight trains an hour, we don't have concerns with, once we get to nine or 10, we do. And that's the point at which passing tracks enter the discussion. And another point, again, we've, you know, mentioned this before, but it's definitely relevant tonight, so I'll mention it again. One of the key reasons that staff has brought this issue to you, starting in 2011, and probably ahead of almost every other city, is the fact that of the five different passing track scenarios that have been studied, three of the five go through the length of... scenarios that have been studied, three of the five go through the length of San Carlos. So while I'm not necessarily a betting man, one could imagine that if there are passing tracks, in other words, if High-Speed Rail and Caltrain do land on the system that takes four trains an hour for High-Speed Rail, assuming it's ever funded, that there's a high likelihood that passing tracks will go through San Carlos. And that's the reason that, you know, I've been at pretty much every meeting and been continuing to bring you these comment letters. I think it's very important that we keep on top of this, because if High-Speed Rail is ever funded, and we don't know today whether it will be or not through the peninsula, but if it is, and if there are passing tracks, for good or for bad, we're likely to get some.
If I may, it, personally, it seems to me that, that the way I would communicate our stance on the blended system, which I think is actually what we said when we last took that, took a position on this back in February, January of last year, we, you know, the blended system is acceptable, provided it doesn't have a significant negative impact on San Carlos. In fact, I suppose even more, more tightly, what I recall people saying was that they were willing to support the blended system, but not if the four tracks, not if the passing tracks were built in San Carlos. It was kind of like, if you want to build them someplace else, that's fine. We don't have a problem with it. And, you know, I could maybe see the nuance of, of putting in that language about, as long as it doesn't significantly negatively impact San Carlos. That's an attempt to try and maintain some flexibility in case we get forced to accept them anyway. But I, I just have a concern with, with saying that, you know, simply saying that we support the blended system, because I, personally, I don't, without those other caveats on it.
I would agree. So are we asking to change the language here to be a little bit more strong, where it talks about eight trains per hour? It, you know, it does say, we, we do have questions and concerns about the need to expand services beyond eight trains per hour, as this would require the need for one or two passing tracks along a portion of the route. We could say, you know, because a four-track system through San Carlos, whether, no matter what configuration, underground, overhead, doesn't matter, it's going to have adverse, the language that was used earlier in here about, or later, about significant adverse impacts on our city.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, just thought of this just now, and I don't know how we word it, but it might be important to put some language in the letter that points out that we're really, along with Belmont, we're really the only jurisdiction in the entire line that has built a berm. I mean, we've made a great investment, and, at, you know, at, at some political cost as well. I mean, we alienated some, some people in the town, but we've actually built a, a structure and made the investment that, that has, you know, been now in place for, what, 15 years? Other than Redwood City just going under at Fifth and going under at Jefferson, no other city has done what we've done. And I, and I believe that we pretty much talked Belmont into going along with us to, to build there. So, I guess I should include them. Belmont and San Carlos are the only cities, so that, and the reason I bring that up is that if, if they're going to consider these, and I realize that, as Mr. Moore points out, that there's, you know, the odds are the 60% chance that we're going to get passing tracks through the city, I think they need to give us consideration, in that we've already made the investment to create a berm, and so that they ought to take a very strong look at that other 40% before they consider putting passing tracks through San Carlos. Again, I don't know how we put that in a letter, I don't know how we characterize that. I look to the rest of you for help, but I think you understand what I'm trying to say here.
Let's hear from the city manager.
I, I think, through the mayor, if I may, I mean, if those two points, I think both Councilmember Olbert and Councilmember Collins described those two points very well from a general policy-type discussion, so if the council, council's comfortable conveying those thoughts, I, I'm comfortable with the fact that we could come up with language within the letter to reflect that, so.
That's what I was, I was just going to say, you know, rather than try and edit the letter in a committee forum, give it to staff.
So you'll bring this back to us one more time? We have time for that?
Actually, the letter is due by Wednesday, so.
Yeah, so.
I would suggest this, the city manager and I and staff to work on it, and then we'll sort of run, obviously, the mayor's signatures, we'll show up to the mayor. Sounds like in particular, that first section or paragraph is where most of the concern is, so we can put something together, revisions.
I'm, I'm comfortable delegating that to staff and the mayor to make sure that it reasonably reflects what we were talking about up here.
As am I.
So we can make a motion to that effect?
Well, could I say something?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The only problem I have with putting a line in the sand is you put a line in the sand. I sort of like the way this is written, because it, it, and again, maybe it's just, we all have different ways to do it. Once you say you're, you're, you're there, you got nowhere to go. You got no, you can't come off it. You can't have any way to do it. Now, if that's what we want to do, that's fine, but I like the way this is written. We, we say what we want, we, you know, we, we say our concerns, and we're going to have another shot at, at, at coming and saying, no, we're not going to. But, once we do it, there's no negotiation. They're going to go, well, they don't care, so we're not going to even talk to them anymore. They're against this, or against that. But maybe I'm reading too much into the line in the sand that the other council members want to do.
Well, and, and I didn't hear Councilmember Olbert suggest a line in the sand. What I heard was perhaps a little clarifying language in terms of what our concerns are as they relate to passing tracks, and to point out that there, you know, should passing tracks come to us anyway, there are other issues that we would want to discuss related to the impacts in San Carlos. And then I heard Councilmember Collins talk about wanting to describe in a little bit more detail our existing infrastructure as it relates to the berm. I, myself have, have pointed it out many times, that I think as long as, you know, these tens of millions of dollars are going to be invested into, into a project such as this on the peninsula, it makes a lot less sense to me from a financial benefit standpoint to take out an existing berm, just to rebuild it, when you're going to have to rebuild, when you're going to have to build, you know, aerial structures or berms on the rest of the peninsula as well. It seems wasteful to me.
Okay, well, I, I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves into a jackpot that we're, they're going to say, well, they're already decided, so we're not even going to talk to them anymore. Just want to make sure we have a line of communication going both ways, so.
No, well, I'm sorry. My point was, and I, I don't want to belabor it, it's just that I think we need to remind them, you know? This is what we've been, we've been through. I don't want to draw a line in the sand, but I just think we need to make the statement.
That's fine, we don't lock it up. He understood what I said. Yeah, okay, good. I didn't. My, my, yeah.
I should have spoken in your direction.
That's right. Okay.
All right.
Good luck with the letter, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We trust you.
We need, we need to make a motion and-
I don't think so, we're just giving direction on this. There's no-
Authorizing the mayor, okay.
I think we're looking for a, a motion authorizing the mayor.
I move that we authorize the mayor to work with staff to finalize the form of the letter to reflect the input provided by council this evening, and to sign the letter.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
I'm going to sign the letter, so I guess yes. All right, we are going to turn back in the book to these consent calendar items, and I think we have K, K, L, and N?
K, L, and N.
K, K, L, and N, do I have that right?
Airlines.
Sounds like, yeah, it does. Korean Airlines. All right, so the first one is K, and this has to do with authorizing another 400 and, we'll round it up, $407,000 to the East Side Connect Project.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, I had one very particular issue about the two items I asked to pull, so if we'd like to save time by not having a full-blown presentation, I'm happy to just tee that up and do it.
Yeah, and I had pulled these same items, so I have some questions too.
Oh, you're right, okay, sorry.
But, but that's, that's all right. If you want to tee up your questions, and Mr. Walter doesn't have to go through everything.
My, yeah, my question simply is that, that, as a, as a general approach to managing budgets, what I always prefer to see is that we first, on any project like this, we, we, when it's over, it looks like it's going to be over budget, we look to do value engineering where appropriate, and where it's not appropriate, we look to other components of the already approved budget to see whether there are things that we can substitute, delay, prioritize. I am always happy to consider increasing budgets, but it's sort of, my preference is only after staff has gone through those other two steps and said, there's nothing, we still can't cover the difference in, in a reasonable fashion, so. Other than that, I mean, I have no objection to the material, I think it clearly stated what the issue was, so.
Well, and, and I guess I will say that the project itself has involved, as we've gotten, it's been about a year now since they've had a fairly complete set of plans and a construction estimate to kind of really begin to put together, so that we could put this out to bid. And value engineering, you know, some of the items that they looked at and they, they ended up taking out of the project, there was originally a signal at Industrial in East San Carlos that has been removed from the project. We reevaluated the, the pavement strategy along Old County Road, and we've reduced where we felt it was achievable, the, the thickness of the overlay, and gone to repairing failed sections of pavement with a thinner overlay, and in some cases, a micro-surfacing, to try to use that money as best we can. There's been some stamped asphalt that was originally proposed that has been taken out, because that's a fairly expensive process as it goes. So, the consultant has worked pretty hard with staff to try to come up with some ideas to kind of bring the budget back in line with where we, where we felt we needed to be. And unfortunately, one of the things that we felt absolutely certain we needed to include in this at the end was a, at least a 10% contingency for the project to go out to construction. And at this point in time, we have included a construction management component, which had not been originally anticipated. So, those are some of the things that have sort of conspired against getting the, the project to stay exactly on the budget that we had for the grant money that was available.
Follow-up. Why would we not have included the construction management component?
I honestly don't know. It just was not something that was included in the early concept, either the grant writing or the, the discussion as of last year. But it's clear that that's not something that we're going to be able to fully handle with city staff, to, to inspect that with a bunch of the other capital projects that we have.
Okay. I, I hope that that sparked a review of all the other projects that we have outstanding to make sure that they have construction management-
Yes.
-components of, okay. So, those changes you were talking about still result in a need for an additional $407,000, or would they reduce that need?
Yes, that's, so with all that said and done, we're still looking at a shortfall of $406,000.
Now, we don't, we'll know that for sure, once we advertise and get bids.
That's correct. The, it'll, it all sort of rides on what our final bids are, and what that cost would be to award the contract. It's possible we'll get very favorable bids, and we won't need to utilize the extra $400,000, but I wanted to be sure that I had the budget going in, just in case.
And so the slow, if we, for instance, I'm, just bear with me for a moment, if we did either two or three as alternates that are here, say, say we did three, which is we adopt a resolution only approving the plans and specs as they are in advertising for bids, then you'd have to come back to us for approval, once you had those bids, especially if, if you're over.
That's correct.
And so that would just slow up the process and gum up the works.
It slows up the process from the standpoint of, if we had very favorable bids that came in below the estimate, then the city manager could go ahead and award the contract and execute the agreement. So, it is a little slower, but it is an option the council can consider.
And, and then number two, the, the one that's kind of in the middle, how's that different from three exactly?
This is one which, number two is kind of a, it, it's between one and three, in that what it, what it says is, it gives the city manager the authority to execute the agreement and award the contract if it's all below budget. So first one is, appropriate the extra money, allow the city manager to execute the agreement if everything is, is below the estimate. That, that is probably the quickest of them all. The second one basically allows us to go out, advertise, if everything is below the engineer's estimate, allows the city manager to award the contract. The third one is, just advertise and come back to the council for the award of the contract, and any appropriation of funding if it was needed.
I see.
And there is, there's, there are no other projects that staff has identified in the capital budget that could be reduced or delayed or whatnot to cover the shortfall?
We didn't identify any other projects which we felt could do that. The, the value of this additional grant that we received for street reconstruction, it kind of essentially offsets for, instead of doing more paving on the paving project this summer, we essentially use this money. So it's, it's sort of deferring a portion of that.
Right, I was going to, I want to argue, that's, that's the trade-off you made, is you deferred street maintenance.
Right.
A question on, this impacts Old County Road, correct?
Yes.
And so, I know we had businesses on Old County Road that were, that had trouble with flooding, and I remember bringing that to the attention of the city manager, that we've got some, especially as you get closer to Belmont. And the answer I got at the time was, that'll be less an issue once we repave, because right now, the road, there's parts of it that are at a, at a camber, and that'll go away, because we'll dig it out and repave it and so forth, and that'll help the flooding issue. Is that still?
That's still part of it. It's, it's, in, at least in my opinion, there's a minor effect, minor beneficial effect. It's not going to solve all the flooding problems up there.
Right, right.
But it will, it will do something to help the, the drainage along the roadway in that area.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Any discussion, or want to make a motion and then have some discussion on this, or?
I think I'd like to hear some ideas.
Some ideas, okay.
Some ideas of what? You have, we have three choices. One, two, three.
Well, I guess I'd like-
Or would you like me to hear, hear a motion that I'm going to make? I'll make a motion to approve item one, or option one, to adopt a resolution, and I'll read the resolution, 2013 dash-
Eight.
Eight. Approve the plans and specifications for the East Side Connect Project C94969, authorize advertisement, increase the appropriation by $406,594, approve an award of a contract amount and construction contingency if within the construction budget, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the lowest response, lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. We might have a little bit of discussion on this, or is?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Collins, go ahead.
And I apologize, I, I'm out of the room, and this may have been discussed. I think, I guess, I want to hear from, are the city, city manager and public works director reasonably comfortable with increasing this budget by $400,000, or do you think we won't need to do it? I just want a sense of, of what you're feeling about this.
I think it's our recommendation to do it. I mean, that, that's our, we're recommending that you-
If you weren't recommending, if you weren't comfortable with it, you wouldn't be recommending.
That's, that's correct. And, and, you know, the proposed approach to this, as, as was described earlier, is basically offsetting some additional street maintenance that we would be, we would have been able to do with some grant funding, which is basically just reducing back to our original planned maintenance level for the year, so. That's the trade-off in, in funding the project as it's envisioned right now. And keep in mind, the vast majority of the funding for this project is grant money that the city's getting.
Right.
So to the extent that, I mean, we're required to make a certain matching amount, and if we drop below that, we're going to start to lose grant money, so.
So, so the motion is for option one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For, I, I just want to be clear, if, if we did put up option two, and that were to pass, there's a certain funding amount that you would be authorized, even if we were over, to go ahead and go forward with the project, if it's within your-
You're basically just adjusting the project estimate at this point up $400,000. I mean, the bids are going to be whatever the bids are. If the bids come in, if you adjust it up to $400,000, and it comes in up $400,000 or below, I'm going to be able to authorize the project and move it forward. If they come in over that, we're going to be back before council. going to be back before council. If you don't make that change, then basically, you know, we're, if they come, same scenario, it's just a lower threshold to come back to council. And our own engineer estimates are saying, you know, we think it's going to be $400,000 higher than what we've estimated in the past, so.
Okay. I'm a little comfortable with myself, you know, approving it as the mayor, or as the vice mayor has suggested. The trouble I'm having with it is although we're covered, it does mean other projects around town that we normally do in the summer to, you know, and we've certainly got them. I mean, there's, you know, heck, the street I live on is gotten.
Isn't it only this one specific project on Crestwood Drive that we're talking about?
No, no. The, the, what, what we're talking about doing is the, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but the, that first bullet point under the analysis on page two, the 412, normally we would take that money and we would spread it around town and do pavement improvements where we have failure. And usually after the winter months, we do have failure. And so we're going to have to do less of that, right?
Actually, that's not the case.
Oh, that's not the case. Okay, I'm sorry.
Because normally, we don't get the money. So this is one-time money that wasn't in the budget. So all the budgeted street resurfacing work is unaffected by this for the coming year.
Ah, okay.
With this grant, we could have done even more.
More, right.
And there's certainly a lot identified that hasn't been funded within the pavement management.
Sure.
Program. You know, so there, there's certainly an argument to be made that there's plenty to spend that grant money on in terms of the street resurfacing program. But what we had planned to do.
We're still going to do.
Eight months ago when we adopted the budget, we're still going to do.
Okay. That makes me feel more comfortable. All right.
We just won't be digging into the backlog that we have.
Yeah, right. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. Item seven, is that an I or an L? That's an L.
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 Keeping you busy tonight, Mr. Walter.
All in a night's work. And again, if the council has, say, some particular question that, that I can answer, I have a couple of slides to use if we want to go through those. But if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer that.
Okay. Oh, for time?
I just have basically the same question. Feel a little more strongly about this one, which is that I understand that projects don't all, purchase, purchase things don't always come in at budget. But, you know, to me, part of budget management is looking for other things that you forego in order to stay within the total. And at the end of the day, if the total needs to be increased, then we need to increase the total. But it wasn't clear to me that that, that part of the process actually took place.
Well, and one of the things, I guess, to, to consider in this regard is that hydro-flush trucks that we do have, we have, we currently have two of them. And the one that we're replacing at this point in time, as staff has worked with that truck and, and then also worked with the newer truck that we purchased in 2010, they've come to realize there's some distinct advantages for that particular model of truck. And, you know, we have, at this point in time, we have two trucks with two different kinds of operating systems. We have two trucks that have two different, they're from two different manufacturers. So we have a mechanic that's got to be working on two different kinds of trucks. By being able to go to this other model, which is a little more expensive than the one that we are replacing because it's a little larger, we get a much better efficiency from a maintenance group perspective and from a mechanic's perspective. And so it's.
Just, I, I understand that. And, and you're arguing value, and I understand the value of proposition is better for this truck. The point I was making, just to be clear, is a little bit different. It's, it's always possible to spend more money. It's a matter of, because value is there. It's a matter of managing a budget. It's like, it's like when I build a new computer for myself, you know, I always tell my wife how much I'm going to spend, and then the actual cost comes in higher because there's always stuff that I think of that I want to put in. If she really wised up to what I was doing, she'd say, well, you got to cut back your expenditure someplace else. And, and that's really what I'm getting at.
Duly noted.
Wasn't, wasn't this budget, wasn't this budget done five years ago?
If I may.
This amount?
This, this item's not actually, this VAC truck is not actually in the budget. It's on a schedule that's, that's part of an equipment replacement fund.
Right. It wasn't done this year.
So the council has set aside money in the budget for the fund. We've said, you know, based on our schedule, we need X number of dollars this coming year to replace a whole bunch of equipment that's on our schedule to be replaced, and you've approved that number. So from that perspective, I think maybe what wasn't clear in the staff report and will be in the future is that this expenditure on this truck is not going to have an impact on the amount that the council has budgeted for the fund for the year. And typically, what happens with the fund in any given year is that there's lots of different pieces of equipment that when they come up to be replaced, they look at it, and one that they looked at this year was a fire engine, said, you know what, we're not going to replace it this year, even though it's on the schedule and we funded it, we're going to replace it next year. And so, you know, that, that's happening all the time. So there's, we're not coming back and asking for an additional $80,000. We're simply pointing out, and, and this may be a case where we provided too much information and caused some confusion on the council, where we're not really asking for more money. We're just pointing out that the truck costs more than we thought it otherwise would have five years ago when we put together the original schedule.
Well, except it was approved.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I am, given what you said, Mr. Malpe, I am happy to support this because what I interpreted, what I heard you say is that you will do what I was hoping we were doing, which is managing the budget as a unit and say, okay, we have to reduce some elsewhere. We'll do that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malpe, I just want to, doing my rough math, we originally budgeted $250,000. The cost is $335,000. But I also noticed that we get a $36,500 credit for the current truck. So really, the net increase is a little over $49,000 that we were originally planning on spending. Do I understand that correctly?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think you're close. And again, it's, it's all within the existing money that the council has set aside. We're not asking for an additional appropriation to pay for this truck.
So you, you set aside enough, you just estimated differently than it turned out to be?
Correct.
Okay.
On a fund level basis.
Right. Okay.
Do we have a motion yet?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of resolution number 2013 dash nine.
Nine.
Nine. I guessed right. Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, authorizing the purchase of a replacement hydro-flush truck from Owen Equipment in the amount of $335,915.33.
Not a penny more.
Not a penny more.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, we have one more item, which is item N, and that has to do with the waiving of this government code section that allows the county of San Mateo to proceed with a lease of real property at One Circle Star Plaza. You also pulled this item?
No.
No? Only I did?
Yes.
Okay. So the only thing that, I don't, we don't really need a presentation, I don't think. I went in and I talked to the city manager about this. My concern was that, you know, this was, this piece of property was taken off our tax rolls and, but the answer I got about it being leased to a private company is that during that time, we will get in lieu monies.
That's correct, yeah.
Through that lease agreement.
It goes back on the tax rolls.
Goes back on the tax rolls. For the time that it's under private, the lessee is a private company or individual.
Correct.
Okay. So that, that waives my concern.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of resolution number 2013 dash 10.
11.
11. Oops, sorry. Messed it up. Resolution number 2013 dash 11. Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos waiving the 60-day government code notification requirement requested by county of San Mateo for lease of existing building at One Circle Star Plaza, San Carlos.
Second.
We have a.
Second.
Motion. We have a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes, and we're adjourned.